This is with Commissioner Kendrick asking, he said we may have a little money to build next year. I need another window. I can help one person at a time at the window. It's not big enough to put two people there. We thought we could put it around the corner.
Now, obviously, this gentleman, Judge Cleveland, go ahead.
I told you wait. Yeah, I know. So I'm asking if we can get another window put in. We had even suggested having it put in on the other side of the pillar on the outside where they wouldn't have to come into the floor. We could have, I think there's space up there, we can put windows so they can go from the main lobby and just walk up to that window. That would cut down. Place like that, space. I did take, I did go to the Personnel Committee of the Matrix and was granted that I can move a C1 up to a C2 and a C2 up to a C3 at no raising salaries or anything. Last two things, I think this is the fourth and the fifth year I'm asking that you as Commissioners and Judge look at pay scale for my clerks.
That is the third year.
There's a discrepancy throughout the county when we're talking about JP clerks. And I do know that there are clerks that are getting here less time and some of mine, they're making more money because of bucket money. And it's not something that I can correct. That's something you folks have to do. And so once again, I'm asking you look at that and bump my clerks up to, I'm not asking for the full thing to make them even. I'm just asking for something to put across. I've had a clerk just leave three months ago to go work at Zimmerman and Blizzard because they offered her more money than what we were paying. So we get very lucky and hired a new clerk that used to work in the county clerk's office. Jennifer Hernandez. She's working for us. So that was very good. The only other thing I'm going to ask is, or two things. Number one, thank you for what we have now. It is so much nicer, so much better than what we had over at the old courthouse. It is really top notch. I like the way you folks did a good job. We would thank you for all the work you did to get us over there. Now, last but not least, Judge Vogels is going to be leaving. I'm going to ask for your indulgence. I think it's very, it's timely. This county actually looking to get a vehicle that the JP's could use to go out to inquest in case we're out fishing with our wives and we should get a call that we could leave our wives fishing and we could come back in, do what we needed to do, and then go back down. So.
No, I'd continue on. I'm enjoying this so much more than you can understand. Please.
Judge, he's called.
Yes, sir.
We'd had, I do believe it wasn't your predecessor, it was Judge Dean's predecessor, make that request a number of years ago. And when that request was presented to the Commissioners' Court, God rest his soul, late Commissioner Edgar looked at me and said, "I got this." And so I think we can just pull this discussion.
Oh, it's up there on the record.
I think it's already been withdrawn.
I didn't hear you talking about, I guess, as asked for fish bait. About hooks. I don't get hooks. I heard you talking about autopsies earlier. And one thing you might want to look at, saving money. I don't think the law has changed. The county has to pay for transportation to take them to Tarrant County or wherever we use for an autopsy. I don't think the county has to pay for the return trip. I think that can be put off on the families. The funeral home will go pick them up and charge the families for their return trip. We're paying just shy right now of between $850 to $1,000 just to Adlin Professional Services and Relief Services of Texas for transportation to and from. It's an awful lot of money. I don't really want to start advertising and tell people, well, we're going to take them there. We don't want an autopsy. We don't have a choice, but you're going to have to pay to bring them back. Lots of other towns do this. Lots of towns do what we do now, they're ruined and try to save some money someplace. That might be a place to look at.
Yeah, the only concern I have about that, Mike, is that what happens, I mean, what happens if we don't, if we take a posture like that and say, "We'll transport them there, but you're going to have to pay to get them back." I'm worried about, you know, we're going to start to hear from, you know, medical examiners and the Netflix or wherever is going. We've got a body over here that you guys need to come get.
We already do.
Okay.
Because Adlin Professional Services will not go back and pick up the body until they know a funeral home to bring them to. And some of these, and we're talking about if someone dies today, they're at Tarrant County this evening. The autopsy is done tomorrow morning and nine times out of 10, they're back here tomorrow. It's a pretty quick 24-hour turnaround. If they're waiting for family members to come in, Adlin Professional Services won't go pick them up until they have a place to take them because their cooler is not big enough because that's also where they do their embalming and everything. It's not big enough to hold a lot of people. Relief Services, I think they can hold 32 bodies. And they've also got a semi trailer out back with a refrigerator in the front. So they can hold a lot more. They don't mind going and picking up right away. But that does happen a lot more than you think. They'll call and say, "When you come get this, we're maxed out." I normally call the family and say, "Okay, have you decided on anything? Do you need to bring your loved one back?"
Well, and I could tell you that sometimes we don't learn that there's, that there is a, the body of a person is sitting in a nursing home for 30 days sometimes, 30, longer than that. They'll call and say, "Look, you guys really need to come over here and figure out what you're going to do here because we've got this person, they've been here for 30 days." You're going, "How is it we're just hearing about this?" So I don't know where the glitch is happening, but I appreciate you letting me know so we can certainly start to move in that direction. But I don't understand why a person who's deceased would sit, you know, for 30 days somewhere waiting for their body to be disposed of. Even if they were a pauper, we've got programs in place with our Social Services Department that clearly outlines how they do this and the timeframe for doing so. And there's just, you know, I mean, if there's no family, then we take care of them. We do. But it's done in a timely manner and as quickly as we can get to it.
I call our county here and say, "We have no information on this individual who's gone for an autopsy, which might have been to end today." I give them all the information I have, they simply don't think. It happens more. We get calls from Tarrant County more than what you think about. We've got to come get a lot.
Yeah. So, and if I could, Mike, how many autopsies are you worrying about? How many have you had to do this year? Any unattended death that's?
Any unattended death disposes it out. I will tell you from family history, and if they have a doctor that'll talk to me, the primary care physician, and they'll give you something. He says, "Oh yeah, this, that, or the other." I won't go on autopsy. They will give me, that doctor can tell me what, sad thing is I've had to go and send 80-plus years old in hospice for an autopsy because they get him over there. He has fallen, but they don't know anything about it because he died that quick. So we have to send that person to Tarrant County to figure out what he, and nine times out of 10, you know, it's cerebral hematoma, just brain bleed. It's kind of a, it's not a waste of money.
But still, you can't tell by looking at them. That's why you were the inquest. Is this correct?
Some of them, I mean, their head's not lacerated, so it's an internal. You don't know. Some will tell you they've had cancer and everything else, but they don't know the type. At least their oncologist, they don't have, so it's just a whole lot of questions that we ask. We don't get answers soon, so that's why we have to send. And there have been quite a few this year already.
But if they are considered a pauper, they work the case through our Social Services and they have been declared indigent, then we have a process that we can do with that. But if they aren't and they have family members that have the means and that cost falls to the family member, am I correct?
Well, the cost doesn't. It all falls to us right now because we pay to and from. And plus, we do the autopsy because we're aware of it.
And Mike, if I could jump back here just a minute to your request about your clerks. I can tell you that, and I do appreciate you coming to the court. I know you brought it up with us before about the problems with bucket money, the problems that this has created. And I look at this every year and go, "We've got to get this fixed, okay?" And we have some department heads who say, "No, no, no, I don't do this. This is so important to keep this in place." But I can tell you there's other departments that look at that and say, "I don't have any people to qualify for that. My turnover is not like that. I've got, I've got the same staff I've had as long as I've been in office and they're great. I don't want them to go. This is, this is good." But in terms of freeing up money to give additional raises and hang on to people, it's not there. I think part of what the intent of bucket money was to take the lowest paid employees and get them brought up. That was the whole intent of bucket money, okay? And when a person left, it did give the department head, because the money had already been budgeted for that year, it did give them the opportunity to attack it from the bottom, the lowest paid, and try to bring them up. I hope that's kind of the way it's been done because that was the intent of it. But it was never intended to be a permanent program. It was always going to be something temporary just to get us started where we're getting up close to average and start to move the lowest paid employees up. So I know I keep doing this, but it's really the better way to, I think, to try to identify what the intent was. But the, but I'm not so sure that it's not something whose time has come and gone. We never intended it to be what, because it happened in your office. And I can tell you that was never the intent of doing it this way.
I lost two.
Right.
You know, what we're talking about, Judge, here, and I'm not good at math at all, but we're talking about $5,500, $6,000 for equal pay for equal type of thing.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And instead of pulling somebody down, we should just step out here and do the right thing and bump his people to what is across the lobby is making. Get this on some parity. We're talking about bringing you up from the bottom and all these things. We just need to do this right thing. I mean, this is, we don't need to overthink or overtop this thing. We just need to do the right thing. That's all we've got to do.
And that was the whole point of why the Personnel Committee was created to start off with was equal pay for equal work. We want all the clerks to make, if they're doing clerk duties, they might, you know.
And that's the righteous thing to do. And his people, just like others, they perform their dues. They show up there, they put their time into it, and they need to be compensated at a level the same as the people across the lobby. There's not a difference in job performance or whatever. We just need to do the right thing. And I think it's well past time to do that now.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay.
Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
I'd like to hear you say, "In conclusion," before you left, so.
In conclusion, thank you once again for everything that you guys have done for Judge Dean and I and the constables and probation over there because it is amazing. I have a courtroom.
I didn't mean to break your stuff and I dropped it. That was not on purpose, but.
It's okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
All right. Judge Dean, his budget stands as presented. Was there anything you wanted to bring up there?
I don't believe there's anything that stands out. You wrote, "Budget stands as is." I don't believe he changed anything. Let me go check that real fast. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's $500 of budget in 8950. It's just kind of carried over. I think that happens a couple places, but that's the only thing I would know, not specific to his department, but that's just the personal one. Well, I think some of the court judges actually have some carryover of non-capital that are just budget roles that do we need to put those in the office. But nothing stands out on that.
All right. Any questions about Judge Dean's?
No, sir.
Thank you. Judge Jones?
Oh, I would note, you know, the security technology funds that are specific to each JP. Those are at the discretion of the Commissioners' Court, not the specific JP. And if he was wanting to enhance security because of, for the extra window, if we can tie that back to security reason, we could use those funds to cover that cost.
So those are ones that were currently existing in their account that you could encourage.
Again, some more special revenue.
And does each one of those courts have a specific technology fund that's earmarked for them specifically?
Yes. We are not required to do it that way, but that's how we always have. So.
And is it the same for each court?
They, I mean, they all get the same fee, but it depends on, you know, volume of cases, what type of activity, what has been spent down before. So there's different balances on each one. You know, to budget a part-time person going forward of $10,000, you would want to have enough, and maybe that wasn't a, maybe that wasn't an ongoing cost, maybe that was just a one-time deal. But we would never want to budget a employee out of a fund like that that didn't have enough revenue to offset. So like if they're not bringing in more than $10,000 a year, then I would, it would be appropriate to budget $10,000 out of there. If that makes sense.
And looking at his photograph, he's asking about that additional window. As you come into that central lobby area, you've got one justice of the peace over here and another one over on the other wall. I mean, they're separated, okay? And there's this window back here. What's in that window? Who's there?
That's JP 1-2.
No, that's the constables.
Yeah, there's a constable.
So that's security that's there.
There's a constable stationed back there at autopsy.
Okay. What about over here?
That's constables, too. One's for JP 1-2 and one's for JP 1-1.
Okay. So they've each got a constable who's actually the security of the courtroom and everything else like that, okay? All right.
See, the one window was, they chose their space. So when you go over there, the one, when you go in the door, JP 1-2 has a lot less space than JP 1-1. So due to fire code, you cannot have the window around the corner right there. So the other option was to put it out into the lobby. Well, if you put it out into the lobby, then you really have no security because the security people sitting right there behind that mirrored bulletproof glass can't see around the corner.
Okay.
You said they chose their space? Is that right?
They did choose their space.
Okay.
Like, that's the maximum amount of window that you could put.
But there's a window there. There's not a comparable window over here.
There's not enough room. Yeah. Yeah, there's not enough room.
Okay. All right. All right. Judge, good to have you with us today.
Thank you. I just came up to ask for a raise effective August 1st.
I'm sure your replacement's going to appreciate that.
Maybe I stated that incorrectly. Lack of communication.
You want to make a presentation to us since you're here?
Really briefly, just a couple things.
Sure, come on up.
I don't have any papers. My probable successor, when I talk to Elijah, the other thing he worked at was, some increases on their primary before the travel schools because we have a mandatory 20 hours we have to do every year. But they, the judge has got that 20 plus another 80. That 80 is probably have been two separate trips to the left hook department. So he's got at least three trips out of town to make several days and so forth. So like I said, that's the reason for that increase on that. We talked to Elijah briefly about security out there. The way our building is constructed, it's very difficult to, maybe it would be infeasible to put up a counter or anything like that. And what an idea was brought up, and I think was an excellent idea because of the shape of our building and entranceway would be just a door buzzer. So Sherri can see the front door from her desk and if she knows who it is or whatever her being is, she can buzz them in or not buzz them in, all her view of something back in the other office. But a door buzzer locked would be, to me, that's, for security right now, she carries a can of walks, a walk spring and I don't hold her desk. And that's literally how there is.
So there's really not a rest button at her desk in case someone comes in and she feels like there could be an imminent threat? Because those buttons do exist in different offices here.
Yeah, and like I said, even if she had one.
What's your response to that? Yeah.
Exactly. And, you know, Bobby Satterwhite, the infamous, that lives a block away. He's fat right now, but he gets crazy. He's a big guy.
Well, he gets off of his psychotropics and then his behavior changes and, yeah.
He's just been a couple of times, couple of times recently in the oceans. He comes over to the office quite often and he graps about stuff, but he's nice to Sherri and he's, but he's not getting better to get worse. But there's others down there like that, too. And so we have no local on, I mean, as far as a police department or city marshal. And I think the best solution, I was agreed with, would be at least a door buzzer that stayed locked until she saw who it was. Have one on the judge's availability and hers also, if that's feasible. So everybody can't just walk in the front door.
Similar to the buzzer at the administrative office at the jail.
And I just want to caution everybody real quick. Let's be careful about talking about security, okay? Don't want to, we don't want to tip anybody off if there might be some, that's for security out there. Okay.
Well, that's all I know.
Okay. Thank you.
Once again, I appreciate you guys and I appreciate the reception and just coming. Judge Boz, whenever he retires, I want to make sure I get a notification because I like the cake. Thank you all for being here. For me and for the county. I know you guys.
Well, thank you, sir. Appreciate you so much.
I'm not going to say anything more right now because I know you all work hard trying to save money on both sides and make decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Appreciate it.
Frank, while we've got just a minute or two, give us an update on how's Janice doing.
She's doing well right now. She's at work right now, but she's back to work full time. The cancer had spread whenever they, once she had to go to Houston, they did the surgery and they said it would come back, but just a matter of when and where. So she's going in regularly now every three months, I think, for just to check up and blood tests and all. So when, and if it comes back, we can catch it early. She's doing pretty well right now. She had a lot of pain from the surgery still and all, but from the lymph node surgery. They took out 32 lymph nodes, 30, or 33, 31 of them cancerous still after the chemo and everything. But she's doing well right now. So thank you for asking.
Thank you. You, too, sir. Thank you very much. Always great to see you, Frank. Commissioner?
If Mike gets called in, I'll issue you the pardon.
Frank, do you retire? I think I've seen you more since you retired than I saw you before.
Yes, sir. You, too. All right. Judge Shea is standing as presented with his budget. Anything JP 3?
I don't think there's any change at all.
All right. Then we'll go ahead and move to Law Library. It says presented.
You know, what we do on a day-to-day basis is very rare when we get someone catching us doing something right, but we've received a number of compliments on deployment of Taylor people coming in and it just seems like there's a very positive flow in that office. So we got caught doing something right on that one.
That's awesome. Yes, she's.
Yeah, I think we did the right thing.
Okay.
The bar was not set very high, I don't think.
All right.
Let's get to this page if we can.
Okay. All right. We are penciled in here to take a short break, so let's go ahead and do that now. We'll reconvene at 2:50. No, at, let's do it 2:35. It's a 10-minute break. We need to take a brief pit stop, Jim.
I just came in early. It's good or in here it's awful.
Uh, no, in all kidding aside, my budget saved you a lot of money last year that I'm asking to give me back this year. COVID hit me pretty hard last year. I didn't spend any money on part-time help. I didn't spend hardly any money on court reporter expense. Contract labor is something I really want to talk to you about. Things of that nature that really went down. I didn't spend hardly any money on conference and seminar. If you'll look at my budget, I still want it to stay the same because we just didn't have a normal year like anybody else. But here's the situation in a nutshell. If you recall during COVID, when a lot of the offices were closed and a lot of the problems hit, Taylor County had one office that never closed. It was open five days a week, eight hours a day, and that was me. It wasn't necessarily a pat on my back. It was a pat on my employee's back. We were open. We were here for law enforcement. We were here for you. And we were here for the court system. The problem was twofold. Number one, law enforcement needed us. Number two, crime never stops. And it ended up being a situation to where when grand jury was ordered to continue by the governor, no matter what else stopped in the judicial system, we continued. There were a lot of individual counties in this state that passed on having grand juries during COVID era. And I did an informal survey once, and there were 30% of the counties in this state that continued, 30% that continued. That means 70% either passed some or all of their grand juries during that period of time. And I can tell you that Taylor County was in that 30%. We had grand jury every single time it was set. Basically, what that means is we now have an abundance of cases that we need to get resolved. And what I'm basically asking for is something that's going to be expensive. If you look at my worksheet, it's called document logistics, but it's not new. Document logistics is a program that I was looking at with Stan Standridge back in 2000, probably 2018. Document logistics is a program, if any of you are like me, I'm not tech savvy, but I know what Betamax, y'all remember what Betamax was? And then we went to VCR. Remember what VCR was? Well, then we went to what? Disc, compact disc, okay? Well, we're talking about the difference as far as forensic evidence in police work. When you think of body cam and video cam and N-dash recorders, we're talking about being so far behind in our work that the practical way for me to explain it is we're still in the Betamax era. And what I looked at when in the pre-COVID era was when I was speaking with, and APD is predominantly the police office department that I spoke with, what I looked at was the fact that juries especially nowadays don't believe that a crime was committed unless they see it on video. And you've seen that in a lot of these television broadcast programs that are broadcasting live trials. And what I have in my department is I have primarily two very large law enforcement agencies that have body cam equipment to go out and look at a crime scene, or I have N-dash recording equipment that go to a server. And when they go to a server, then we have to bring that server to another server, a second server. And then I have someone in my office burn CDs to build a recording of that download to give to the courts, to give to my office, and give to the defense attorneys. And by the time I have recorded everything on disk, I have used three people in my office, and I have made three copies of a disk on a download that this program will use the original server to download automatically and electronically with one push of a button. And not only will it do it with one push of a button, but it'll also give access to the court system, my office, and the defense lawyer. But in addition to that, it'll also tell me and be able to report to the court system if the defense lawyer ever opened it and reviewed it. And that's going to be really important to me and to you. Why would it be important to you? Well, here's a perfect example. When you, does anyone not know what the Chavez trial was about? I'm sure you do. It's an OIS, an officer-involved death case, okay? But if anyone here believes that officer-involved death cases don't involve or are never involving Taylor County, don't believe that happens because we have officer-involved death cases pending in Taylor County right now. We had an officer-involved death case last month in Taylor County. We cleared an officer-involved death case with our grand jury two months ago. An officer-involved death case that goes upside down, and Brad, you were in law enforcement, Randy, you were in law enforcement, y'all all know this. If an officer-involved death case goes upside down and a civil action follows, which they always do, whether grand jury finds a no bill or a true bill, and whether an officer is found to be criminally involved or not, those civil actions, whether at the end of the day a county is liable to a family for wrongdoing or not, they're going to make a $40,000 a year expense for this type of protection and collection of this forensic evidence, minuscule, minuscule. I mean, this would be the retainer fee for one of those cases. So what I'm asking for is something that's going to get us out of the Betamax syndrome and back into the program that we should be using. I've talked to almost every jurisdiction that is our size, Wichita Falls, Lubbock, I have personally gone to Lubbock, Amarillo, I've personally spoken with Waller County, Tarrant County, Dallas County, everybody that I can in our general population group, and no one, no one, everybody looks at me or talks to me and goes, y'all are doing what? Y'all are burning discs? We could quit burning discs 10 years ago. They may not be using document logistics. Most of them are. But they are using some kind of drawdown system and working with the server. If you look at the cost, and I've spoken with the auditor, if you look at the cost of the system, what I can show you is two things. And the reason that I'm sold on this and the reason that I'm willing to personally invest my office in it is two things I'd like to bring to your attention. The one-time cost of setting this, I believe is quite expensive. It's $40,000. It is my belief and the reason I believe strongly in this is that that may be expensive, but I do invest my money. I have spoken with enough people to believe it's working. It's advantageous. The only thing that I can say is this is the only program that I have found that works with WatchGuard. For two years, I have refused to come to you and ask for this program because APD said that they were going to go to Axon. And if they went to Axon, Axon would do the same thing that document logistics would do, and we wouldn't have to buy this program. I talked to Chief Dudley a month ago. They said they are not going to purchase it. They are going to buy an upgrade of WatchGuard, and they're going to stay with it for a couple more years. The problem with WatchGuard that I've had, and I begged them to go away from WatchGuard, is WatchGuard is not consistent with or compatible with Odyssey, and there is no program that I can find that is going to be compatible with it other than document logistics. There is a program in document logistics that can make WatchGuard be compatible if it goes through document logistics to go through Odyssey. But Axon was going to be my safeguard. I spoke with the auditor, and I told him, I said, if APD will simply buy Axon, I'll save us a fortune because we won't need it. But that's a no-go. And as far as Chief Dudley was concerned, they tried to get it. They weren't able to get it through the budget. They're going to go with an upgrade of WatchGuard, and unfortunately, to me, that's not going to work. If you look at the second part of the bid, the approximate cost per year was bidded in at $42,915 a year. That was primarily based upon storage, and I spoke with Mrs. Edson about storage. A large portion of that storage is cloud-based. She said that cloud-based is the priority now as far as security and the fact that we don't want to overload any other server that we currently have in existence. I do believe, and it is a possibility, that if the IT person that I am asking for is approved, that I can keep that down. Because here's the thing, if you look at the very bottom, it says document logistics, and I'm reading from the second to the bottom paragraph, document logistics will track the amount of storage used on a monthly basis and issue a credit if less than three terabytes are used on a monthly basis. They'll also track the agency used more storage than three terabytes per month and bill the next fiscal year if needed. What they're basically saying, and we move and paraphrase the last paragraph, if we move more closed cases than required, minimal access to a cheaper storage level for cost savings. What I have discussed with Ms. Edson, and what I believe this new IT person can do is if I can keep the number of cases going out in closed files off the cloud as the number of new cases come in, in other words, I can balance them out, I will keep the cloud at an even number, at a balanced number. Does that make sense? So what I have spoken with Mrs. Edson about, and what in my mind I can do is if I can keep the closed-out cases off the cloud at the same rate that I'm putting new cases on the cloud, then they will not be charging us. They'd only charge us for what we have on the cloud on a monthly basis. So if I have a WatchGuard keeping the cloud down to only what is necessary at the time, I will keep that below. So that number that you're looking at, the 429, is a max number. It should never go over that. In and all probability, I can keep it below that. If you want to talk about the new IT person, there's two individual reasons that I need that IT person. One of the reasons, and I'd hoped to have a better understanding of what was going to happen, unfortunately, we had some legislators that decided to fly off, and I mean that quite literally. I had hoped that I would have some kind of idea of what they were going to do in the special session. We're not going to have a clue. We may have a second special session. And if you keep up with that, and some of you do, we had a very unique bill that came through that wanted me to transcribe all of the grand jury testimony, which would help with this, and keep up with it. That quietly went away during the regular session, okay? For some reason, it just quietly slipped away. It was on a major agenda, but it slipped away. If you keep up with the agenda items, two of the agenda items, I think, one of the agenda items that caused the legislators to fly away was the fact that they wanted the voting restrictions to be heard in special session. Now, one of the other agenda items that I, and I can only guess because they didn't have special session yet, but the other agenda item was bond conditions, and it was a huge question. But if you take the guidance that I take from my advisor, TDCAA, you know that, and some of you, Chuck, you know this, you kept up with it, Randy, you probably do, Kyle, you knew, you know that there are situations where bills can be added with amendments. And amendments can quietly come back in as easily as they quietly went away. And what scares me is some of these amendments may cost me money that I don't have. So I'm trying to build this IT person in for twofold. Number one, I'd like her to keep up with the document logistics, to keep her up with the IT, keep the cloud level. And number two, if in fact this grand jury testimony has to be recorded, which has always been a huge item, but it's kind of on the back burner right now, I just don't want it to come back on the front burner and cost the county money that the state never really puts money in to pay for. Keep it from being a cost prohibitive thing that I can't afford to pay for. Y'all don't have it in the budget. We can't take care of. The other thing that I want to show you, and it's real important, look at line item number, if you look at account number 7368, 7368 is tagged contract labor, okay? Contract labor in the creation, if you remember this, and some of you probably do, contract labor was the creation of a share employee. It was a share employee that resides over at APD. And what that share employee does, or originally did, was it was an incoming salary for a person to burn CDs, okay? But if you look at it, it gradually goes up. Now, it's my theory, and you can call it just Jim's theory if you want to, but I don't have anybody over at my department that's an incoming laborer that's making 44.5. I just don't. You can look at my budget, and a lot of my girls would love to make 44.5. I don't say that to be biased. A lot of my employees would love to make 44.5. But that's no longer an incoming salary. But here's the thought. If you give me an IT position at $30,000 or somewhere in that drive, and you give me document logistics, I may very well be able to, and my plan is next year to come to you and say, I don't need to share a contract laborer anymore because I don't have the need to burn CDs anymore. I'm able to pull those down off the share drive, put them in document logistics, and go with them. Does that make sense? Because we don't burn CDs anymore. And I really think that you're going to take the money that I am spending to share a 40, I mean, it's there on paper. If I'm paying 22.4, then the city's telling you they're paying 22.4 as well. It's got to be there, doesn't it? Doesn't it make sense? So it's got to make sense that I can bring in an employee for you at less than what we're sharing somebody to do a job that next year, if you give me the document logistic program, won't be needed. So that's my spiel.
So I understand. So are you saying that the city of Appleton has a bunch of good line item? Is this shared contract person?
It's my understanding you've got a secretary that's-
And they're sending that money to Taylor County?
No, we send that money to them.
So we send money to a person that's not contributing to your office?
No, 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 no. No, no, no. We have, no, they contribute to our office. We have a person at APD that helps burn CDs, okay, off their share drive for body cam video and for-
Stuff that's coming to your office.
N-dash, and they bring a stack, but Commissioner Williams, the problem is burning CDs is an art of the past. Because you would be amazed at how many, and I'm not blaming the defense lawyers, but it's a real, if you ask my IT person that's overworked, and I have three people that have to touch these CDs before they go out, you have defense lawyers that come back and say, I didn't get them, or I got them and they don't open, or I need another, I need another stack because I changed lawyers. And in one, in the one officer-involved shooting that I took to grand jury last month, we had 16 different views. That's 16 camera shots times three that we had to burn, where I wouldn't have to burn a single shot. So in answer to your question, no, we have an employee-
So, but that employee's not going to go away if we do what you're asking us to?
That employee would no longer need us to contribute to their salary.
So the city would then have to pick up that salary and pay for it?
Be my recommendation that we not help pay for it.
Mr. Hicks, on the Axion and the WatchGuard that you spoke of with APD, that's their primary recording devices. The SO still uses Coban, I'm guessing, unless-
Right.
Okay. Does this work well? Does it interface with Coban and LiveView cameras?
Coban and WatchGuard is the primary recording device that APD now has. This will work with both. This will work with both. Axion was the one they were looking at, and Axion would do, what I understood, Commissioner Burson, what I understood was that would do almost the same thing that this would do. But what document logistics will do is not only draw down from the server digital video feed, but it'll also draw down the offense reports.
Okay.
It will draw down everything. It will draw down the offense reports, officer statements, victims' report, everything.
And so all that being drawn down can then electronically be shared with the defense because of the, is it Brady Bill, whatever it is, the-
It's all there.
Automatic discovery right there.
It's all there.
And so our system with the sheriff's office being Coban and Odyssey, how does that plug in and interface with document logistics?
It's all compatible.
It is?
It's all compatible. Now, I've talked with the sheriff's office. They are bidding in, as you probably are aware, they're bidding in for a new program as well. But document logistics assures me that they are going to be compatible with whatever program they're working with. I am going to put it in my contract with document logistics. If you give me the money, Frank's going to put it in the contract. If you're not compatible with sheriff's office, we're out.
Okay. I just want to make sure, I know PD is probably 80% of your case filing, but we do have to remember there are cases coming from over there as well.
Sure, sure.
And so I want to make sure that you get a system, this document logistics, that will work with both interfaces.
Well, I know we're on Facebook, but I'm big enough to say this. I'm not going to buy a pig in the pothead. I'm going to put it in there to where if it doesn't work, I'm out. The county's not going to pay for something that doesn't work.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we interface with both-
Right.
-agencies because they're separate, they're different.
And let me show you where that goes in. Look up where you go to standard user, if you look at the pricing, Commissioner Burson, if you look at the pricing where you see standard user and concurrent user-
Yep.
Standard user is 21. Standard user will not only include, I think my numbers were like 10 to APD. I'm giving 5 to outside agencies. I'm giving some to SO. I'm not only giving those, but I'm going to include Merkel and the outlying law enforcement agencies as well, so that they can bring in. Now, I know we're going to have some adjustment problems because some of them do use some independent product that we're going to have some adjustment problems with, but we're going to work with them best we can. Then the concurrent users, those are defense lawyer programs, okay? That will open up, and there may be more than 10 defense lawyers try to get on at one time. They'll just have to wait their turn.
It'll still be quicker waiting your turn than coming over and waiting on CDs to be burned-
Sure, sure.
That they're going to lose.
Yeah, because it'll be better than them trying to get a CD and take it back to their office and then not open up.
Okay.
Absolutely. And one of the things that you're going to see is this Michael Morton compliance module, that's $35 a month, that will tell me and you and the judge if the lawyer went and opened that file, what time he opened the file, how long he stayed in the file. That'll let everybody know who's looking at what. And that's the beauty of it, is we have a system of notification.
Jim, what you're saying is in your agreement, you're going to make sure there's a guaranteed interface?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Jim.
Anything else? The only caveat to this, and I will tell you one thing, I believe, Chuck, I think you were the only one that was in the committee meeting for the, when I presented the, I did have the backing of the committee for the new employee. I did show in there that this had been approved by the committee. I did mention in the committee, and I based most of my presentation on the fact that there was a House Bill 1313 at the time, and I based most of my testimony before that committee on the grand jury bill. I can't tell you if that's going to be a done deal or not. They pulled it off the table. But this IT person is worth its weight in gold as far as keeping up with this digital information.
You have one IT person, right?
I have one IT person.
That was originally Ryan, and then when he went to IT and-
That's Elizabeth.
... placed-
Here.
So this is the second person?
This is the second person, but I can tell you that this is the second person, this is the second person that we've added in 20 years. But in 20 years, we have developed body cams, video cams. We have created, you know, in addition to the N-dash camera recordings, I am fixing to try the, what is commonly known as the mattress murder. We have cameras that are used that the media beats us to a crime scene. So if you understand what I'm saying, the bottom line of that deal is media's catching up with us. IT is needed. up what the site is needing. I see one commissioner that says my time is up.
Oh, yeah, I was getting stir-crazy sitting here.
I get stir-crazy too. You tell me how to get around that, and I'll, I'll help you out. Okay.
But to answer your question, yes, personnel committee, digging animals, we'd vote to, uh, recommend that position be added to your group.
It, and, and it's gonna be needed. We have three people, right now, we have three people that are trying to keep up with making all these copies. And guys, I'm in, I'm invested in this. I, if, if you look at my forfeiture account, I'm spending ninety thousand dollars this year. Uh, I, I applaud the, the, uh, purchasing, uh, agent, he's helped me find a, a pickup to replace. I was amazed, uh, that we can find a vehicle for that price. Uh, I'm willing to cash in twenty thousand for the upfront cost. Uh, I'm, I'm putting in twenty grand to, to try to defray some of the higher-end line prosecutors I've got. I love this county as much and more than y'all do, okay? I'm invested in it too. So, I'm here with you. Any other questions?
Uh, just one, Jim, one last one. Um, each law enforcement agency will need at least one named standard license?
Yes.
Do they become the holder, uh, they're the holder of that license, and they would be responsible for acquiring that license, is that correct?
Yes. We're gonna have, uh, Judge Wilt will have one for each law enforcement agency, uh, and, and we may have some compatibility problems we're gonna have to work around. Uh, I do realize, and, and, and Commissioner Burson had mentioned it, APD and SO are, are a bulk of them, but we're not going to overlook our law enforcement agencies outside those two.
And that list is DPS Rangers, or constables?
Yep. And, and I, I don't know if y'all ever met Ranger, uh, Burson, but he, he's on top of everything in the world, so, yes, he'll be on top of it too. If you haven't had an opportunity to meet Josh Burson, our Ranger, he's phenomenal. Any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I don't have any other questions. Uh, Mr. Anderson, do you have anything further? On the district attorneys?
Um, I'm just, is that software contract for, like, COA three, maybe, should take that, do you know?
I, I don't know. Uh, you know, if we can, uh, th- there's, there is a little bit up in the air as far as that goes, but-
Boy, if you break that out, it's a hundred fifty, I guess. Um, I guess, it says year one, total of one oh eight, one eight thousand?
Right.
So, that, that would be-
Let me look at what you're looking at.
Yeah, we'll have to do it in a second.
And I think, you know, that, that really is, is an estimate like any other estimate. When we get down to the bottom line, we can, uh, I don't, I don't know if, if the question is, what is the upfront cost really gonna be? I don't know if they're charging you a year upfront, I don't know if they're gonna charge the forty thousand upfront for the setup fee and then go from there. I'll have to find out.
The, the concern is big, big requirement.
Sure, sure.
I would think if they are used by law enforcement, they would have something. They haven't used the, uh-
My phone, with that phone, the source, source, that you have to have something that will be-
Yeah, 'cause we're gonna, we're trying to meet, we're interfacing with the software.
Interfacing with the stuff's probably-
And let's check and see if they're not on byboard, because if they're dealing with that many agencies, it's already pre-bid.
You know, some people know what they got, and they'll not put on contact. We see that in jail, jail facilities do this all the time, they, they always sell accounts and governments, but they, they wanna charge what they're charged, that won't get a contract. But we can chat.
All right. Anything else?
I think that's it.
Jim, if we were able to, uh, put this together, and we get to October first, and then this starts, how long will it take for this, uh, system to be online?
I would hope by the first of the year.
Good.
Okay. Y'all have any other questions? You know how to get ahold of them.
Okay.
Everybody else does. Y'all take care.
Bye-bye, you too. Brita, how are you?
I'm fine.
We're ready for you if you're-
I have my napkin, sorry.
We're right on schedule, we're actually running a minute over right now, so we're good.
How are y'all this afternoon?
We're excellent, thank you. Good to have you here with us today.
So, um, I guess, I don't know where y'all want me to start. Basically, um, as far as my budget, there are three line items, uh, where there, I've requested an increase, um, starting with, um, line item seven-three-six-eight for contract labor. Um, and that is up some from FY twenty, and what that covers, that AD two thousand, uh, is our payroll cost, and that would be payroll cost for November of twenty-twenty-one election. And then, going into next year, the county, um, is always responsible for all of the early voting costs for primaries and primary runoff. So, we would be responsible for paying the early voting payroll cost, uh, for both the primary and the primary runoff. And, um, last year, uh, we were paying our poll workers ten dollars an hour, and we now are paying them twelve dollars an hour, so part of that increase is due to the increase in what, uh, we pay them on an hourly wage. I will say that, uh, one thing that I'm, uh, wanting to do is, uh, for training, our training classes for our poll workers, we do pay them to attend training classes, and those typically are lasting from anywhere from three to four hours, depending, uh, because by the time we go over all of the procedures and so forth, and then we also go over the equipment, and, you know, they have to, uh, we do demos on the equipment and make sure and refresh them on the equipment operations. Um, so, typically, what we've always done is we've paid them that, that same hourly wage, that twelve dollars an hour even for attending training. And so, what I'm, uh, wanting to do is to reduce that training pay to ten dollars an hour, and that will, you know, offset that sum, if that's what that AD two thousand, um, includes. Um, and then if you'll move down to line item seventy-four-thirty-five, which is service contracts, and basically that covers my licensing support on our, um, equipment and so forth, and that's made up of, uh, our software support that we have, that we pay through our vendor Votek. Seven thousand and twenty dollars of that is for the software support on our electronic poll books. And then, um, it also includes ninety thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars of that is for our licensing support on our new, uh, voting system that we purchased in nineteen. Um, and then fifty-five hundred of that is for Democracy Live, which we utilize, Democracy Live, um, they assist us in the emailing of our military and overseas ballots. Those voters are allowed, if they're deployed outside the county or the country, uh, they're allowed, ineligible to receive their ballots via email. And so, they assist us, and we utilize their program to accomplish that. Um, there's another thirty-five hundred in there, and I, I include that thirty-five hundred in, uh, every other year. And what that is, that's for Votek, our voter registration, uh, vendor. They perform what's called an NCLA process, uh, that's a national change of address process, uh, because in, uh, December of the odd years, we're required to mail out, uh, new voter registration cards to all voters, and they can, uh, take our voter registration database, and they basically bounce it against the, uh, NCLA, National Change of Address. And what that process does is it reduces the number of cards that we may have to mail out. Uh, so, that, basically, if a voter, we have them on Sales Boulevard, one-two-three Sales Boulevard, but they've turned in a change of address at the post office, then it, it recognizes that, and we won't mail that card to that address. So, that's what that thirty-five hundred is, is a fee for them to, uh, perform that process. And that, that line item is a, uh, simply because of the increase on our licensing support with Hart. And then, if you move down to line item seventy-five-ten, which is our postal line, again, that, that is an increase on that line of some eleven thousand dollars. And basically, the main increase in that, of course, is, like I was saying previously, in the odd years, in December of every odd year, we have to, uh, print and mail out voter registration cards for every registered voter. And, uh, we have some seventy-one thousand registered voters right now, and when we mailed cards out back in, I guess it was nineteen, December of nineteen, we only had like sixty-five thousand. So, our county's growing, we've got more registered voters, and so, we will have an increase there simply because we've got more cards that we'll have to mail out.
What's an increase?
Um, and cards?
On your post, postings.
Well-
You're breaking a bit.
Yeah, well, it, it's fifty-one thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars.
It's an increase of twenty-eight thousand, I thought it was.
Well, if you compare it to twenty-one, but compared to twenty, which was when we had to mail out cards, 'cause our post, that's, that's why my postal fluctuates every other year.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Randy, I didn't-
Those are good.
Um, so, basically, uh, if, if you look at it compared to FY twenty, uh, which is when we would've had to mail out the mass mailing again, um, it's only up eleven thousand compared to that one. Uh, but part of that increase is because more cards are gonna be mailed out because of a larger voter registration database. Um, the other thing is we're anticipating, and I've been told that there is a postal rate increase coming in August. I don't know how much that increase may be, uh, but there will be some increase, uh, along that. Um, and then also, uh, that, that fee covers the mailing of our mail ballots, you know, postal fees for our mailbox, our, our permit fees, and just our daily mailings that we have. But the bulk of that is due to the mailing of cards in December. Um, and that's really the only three items, uh, that were, that I've seeked an increase I do have, uh, some other things that will impact my budget, um, and it's gonna depend on, you know, uh, as I've spoken with the court previously regarding Senate Bill five-ninety-eight, uh, which did pass in the regular session. And what that bill does is, uh, it requires and mandates that all elections that are conducted or held after September of two thousand and twenty-six have to be conducted using an auditable voting system. And currently, we have a DRE system, which is a direct recording electronic system, uh, and Taylor County's used a DRE system since two thousand and five. And, uh, we did upgrade and get a newer one in nineteen, uh, but with Senate Bill five-ninety-eight, we will be required to convert that system. If we convert our system prior to November of twenty-twenty-two, uh, then the county, according to the bill, is eligible for a hundred percent reimbursement. If we delay and we convert prior to November of twenty-twenty-four, then we're eligible for fifty percent reimbursement. Um, but after that, there would be no reimbursement and so forth. I do have a quote, and I think, uh, y'all should have a copy of that quote from Hart Inter-Civic, uh, to perform that conversion. Uh, the total, the total amount on that quote is one million, three hundred, twenty thousand, forty-six dollars. And that is to take our existing voting machines that we have and convert them to an auditable, uh, voting system, which basically is a paper-based system. It provides a paper trail, um, so when voters go to vote, uh, once that conversion is done, um, they will vote, uh, with a ballot, a piece of ballot paper, they'll insert it into the voting machine, make their selections, uh, it'll print that sheet back out, they review it, and then they take it over to a separate digital ballot scanner, insert it into that ballot scanner, their vote is then cast, and then that ballot paper, that ballot sheet is retained as the paper backup for their ballot, for their vote. Now, I have been told that there is, um, thirty-four million was provided in the state budget to reimburse counties, uh, for the conversion or purchase of their new equipment, uh, but the Secretary of State is still trying to determine, um, how much for each county and how they're gonna disperse that, and when they're gonna disperse that. At the same time, they have said that they do believe there's a possibility that there will be HAVA funds that will be available, but again, they don't know when, and they don't know how much. And there is, there is some question on the intent of the wording of the bill, uh, because the way the, the bill is written, um, it basically states that counties can use federal funds if federal funds are available. If there are no federal funds available, then they may use state funds if state funds are available. So, there's a little bit of, they're trying to determine if the HAVA funds come down, can they use both or just one or the other? Um, and then, I spoke to, um, the state today, and, uh, there may be rainy day fund money. But I will tell you that, um, we were, uh, we do have an election security grant, um, that we have used to make several, um, security upgrades to my office as far as video cameras and, uh, you know, improve the security of my office. Um, and there are funds that I think are still remaining in that grant. I spoke with Elijah, and I think there is probably some thirty thousand dollars that is available and would be available to use towards this purchase, uh, or this conversion, because it does have to do with security. So, um, that grant, I think that grant deadline was extended to December of twenty-twenty-two. So, basically, how much will the county's part be, and how much will we be looking at to spend to do that conversion? I don't have an answer. I wish I did. I do believe that there will be funding, um, but how much will be left for the county to incur our cost, I, I really don't have an answer today. I, I wish I did. Um, some other things, uh, depending on when we do the conversion, um, you know, we're gonna need additional, uh, payroll costs, uh, because it will require that we have at least another two or three people in our polling places, um, just to assist voters until they become acclimated and familiar with the extra step in voting. Um, also, it would require, uh, talking with other counties, uh, that do have this system. Um, they've had to have voter, uh, workers just stationed there at that ballot scanner or at the door, uh, to make sure that voters do place that ballot in that scanner, and that they don't take that sheet of ballot paper and think that's their ballot receipt and take it home with them. Um, because it's not a receipt, it's not gonna be something that the voter is, is gonna need to keep. If they leave there without placing that ballot in that scanner, then they have not cast their vote. Um, so, you know, keeping that in mind, that we, I would need, you know, extra workers for at least a few elections to get through until voters become acclimated. Um, the other thing is, um, the ongoing cost and additional cost that would be required for ballot paper. Um, it's a thermal type ballot paper, uh, but, uh, it's expensive, uh, right now, currently there, uh, it's two hundred and fifty dollars per thousand sheets. So, if you look at, what I did is I went back and I just looked at, um, two thousand eighteen and two thousand and twenty election- cycles, those being our last largest cycles we had. And in 2018, we voted total 71,000 people. And then in 2020, we voted 84,000 people. So you, you're looking at possibly needing anywhere from, you know, 70 to maybe 100,000 sheets of ballot paper in a year, depending on the year. Which would equate to another, you know, $20,000 a year in my budget just to have the ballot paper to conduct the election. The other thing that would be incidental, I don't know what it would cost, but I think I've mentioned before too about storage space. If we do this conversion, storage space is going to be a major issue. I've talked to other counties, they're going to be faced with the same thing and trying to store additional equipment plus paper and everything else. But on this quote, it includes the conversion of our existing voting machines, but it also includes the purchase of digital ballot scanners that we've not had to have before. So 75 of those scanners, I don't have anywhere for them. Our, the room where we currently store our voting equipment is wall-to-wall. So I would, we would have to address that at some point. The other thing is, we, the quote includes a purchase of what's called a Verity Do-Go. And basically, it's a device where when we have to go out and do a curbside vote, going to this paper system, we would have to literally take the whole table or a rolly cart or something out to the car and facilitate a voter being able to vote curbside. This Do-Go item is a handheld thing, and basically we would take the tablet from the voting booth and then place it in that, in casement, if you will, which has a printer and stuff built in. And they'd be able to just take that out to the car and hand it to the voter. So, you know, storage space is, is going to be a big issue. And, you know, at any time, because we store, we, our retention period's 22 months, so you figure a two-year period of voting, you could have anywhere from 100,000, 120,000 or better, just paper. We have, our storage room we use now is about a 15 by 9, and that's where we keep all of our election records, and it's, it's full. And that would just be paper. The other thing, I didn't include it anywhere, but a thought I had in, you know, trying to contemplate the process and the voting process and, and how things are going to look with, with a converted system. So technically, when the voter places that ballot paper in the scanner, their vote is cast, and then that paper ballot is stored in, in that ballot box beneath there. Well, those ballot boxes, if they become full, we're going to have to send somebody out and replace them, put a new one in, and bring those ballots back into our warehouse. And, and I'm just trying to figure out in my mind, you know, they'll hold the ballot box, those ballot bags, 1,500 to 2,000 sheets of paper is what I'm told. We shouldn't have to change those out each day, but my, my thinking is, you know, each night of early voting, do, do I need to send someone from my office out there to retrieve that ballot box and bring it back in? Does it need to be a peace officer? Does it need to, for, for, for security purposes? You know? So, so things like that, I'm, I'm not sure. I haven't allowed for any additional people to do that sort of thing, but that's something, you know, that we'll have to think about going forward too. And that, that's all I have as far as Senate Bill 598 and how that might impact us. And the other thing, there's a special session. Senate Bill 7 did not pass the regular session. So they have introduced Senate Bill 1 and House Bill 3. Senate Bill 1 does have the requirement in there that will be a huge impact to us because there is a requirement in there for the posting of a licensed peace officer during central count when we're tabulating. And then also the requirement for video surveillance and the live streaming of any place we have voted ballots. And so that, price-wise, I, I put a dollar, an approximate dollar amount on there for what I, I feel like we might need for a licensed peace officer. $1,500, I, I don't know. Typically, we can get everything tabulated and done, you know, theoretically, they would need to be there probably around 6:00, 6:00 PM, 5:30, 6:00 PM, and typically, we're done by 9:30 or 10:00 that night. Tabulation is, you know, usually three, four hours. But we would have to have one posted there during that period as a requirement of Senate Bill 1. Now, as far as the video surveillance, the way it's worded in the, the bill is that it would have to be a, a system that retains a record of all areas containing voted ballots. So I, specifically, it calls out that especially when we deliver the voted ballots to the ballot board and they're, they're processing voted ballots, and then again, you know, during a central count when we're tabulating. I'm, I'm taking that, that it would also mean that we'd have to have video surveillance in the room where we have stored those voted paper ballots also. The other thing is that video has to be livestreamed and it has to be stored. And talking to Rebecca, that's where the price comes in, is because the storage. And she's, she's quoting me a, a number of $125,000 if we're required to, if that does pass, and we have to do that. As y'all know, there's no quorum. Senate Bill 1, that does have this requirement in it, did pass the Senate last night, but it's, it's not going to go anywhere. If the legislators do come back, then it'll take its process through the House. If they don't come back, then it just dies and, and we start again and go again. So...
Freddie, if this passed, we're pretty much going to have to see this come out of our pocket, it'll be another unfunded mandate, won't it?
Yes, there's nothing in, that I have heard or am aware of for any funding for the requirements of the video surveillance. When I spoke to the state, or actually, when I spoke to Senator Lambrous, Representative Lambert's office, they said, well, that, that shouldn't be such a big chore. And I said, well, the video, just a camera alone is not expensive, but what I'm understanding is the storage. And then you get into some of the IT stuff that I'm just not real savvy on the IT stuff, but Rebecca says the storage is what is the problem. And it would have to be stored until the end of the year and, of the election held. Okay, so, so what I'm understanding from that is that's how it's worded. It is to be retained until the end of the year in which the election is held. So if you hold a November 2022 election and you've had to livestream everything in that election, then you would only have to retain it till the end of December of that year. Is the way, the way that it's reading.
Have you had an opportunity to visit with our senators and representatives regarding the cost, potential cost of these bills that they're going to act, what it's going to cost the local government?
I have with Representative Lambert's office, I've not had to...
So they're aware that, it almost sounds like that kind of response about the camera thing, that that's not that big of a deal, like they don't really have a clue what these costs really are.
Yeah, I don't think they understand, I mean, I know I didn't, but I'm just, you know. They don't, I don't know that they fully understand how all that works. I certainly didn't until I talked to Rebecca. But I've not had much luck with Senator Buckingham, so... But wished I had better news, which I wish I could have just said, mine's just going to stand as is, but there is a lot of things that I don't have answers for you on. There is another, there is a, in Senate Bill 1, it's also spelled out in there about your main early voting polling place, which we are in compliance on that. It has to be in my office or it has to be in a, a room inside my, inside our building. But I would like to also point out, I don't know how, I would need to address that with y'all as far as, the voting room that we currently use is, is really quite small. We've, we've used it and it serves its purpose very well, except that it's just not large enough. And I think we, I don't know if y'all saw the lines that we had the first ever revoting in November, it was crazy. And we, we managed it, we got it all through, but it would really be nice and it would really be helpful if we had enough space where we could facilitate more voters as far as having two check-ins and be able to put more equipment into a voting room. This location has turned out to be one of the top five locations that we have as far as voter turnout.
But this would be your main place, not your satellite voting places?
No. The main early voting polling place, the permanent branch polling place has to be my office. Because I, even last year, you know, anticipating large turnout, I was attempting to find another place rather than that small room. And last year, in 2020, we utilized every single ounce of space that I had down there. With the ballot board, we had to have enough space. Of course, COVID, you know, contributed to part of that because we had to make sure that people were adequately spaced. But I, I think we're, I think that we're always going to be in that COVID mindset. I don't, I don't think that people are going to ever be ready to go back to, you know, close quarters.
So you think social distancing is part of our life?
I think to some degree, yeah. And we still, when we go forward with our elections, I'm still doing those COVID protocols, you know, making sure our polling place is clean and sanitary for our voters. But, but we used every space we had last year. I had to split my training room and we used half of it for the ballot board to meet. Of course, we were processing some 64,000 mail ballots too, so we had more people on the board that needed to meet. And then we used the other half of it for our limited ballots. And we stayed busy on that. And, and I'm very fortunate, I do have one of the larger offices in the county, and we're very blessed in that aspect, but I do, we're going to need more storage, more storage for, secure storage for our election voted ballots and our election records, and we really need a, a larger voting room. So... I don't really have anything else unless y'all have some questions with me, I'll answer them to the best of my ability, or if I don't know, I'll find out, so...
Freddie, thank you for keeping us updated on this situation with the state legislature. We'll have to see where we are when it all settles.
Well, I spoke to Senator, I keep saying Senator, Representative Lambert's office earlier and just wanted to make sure, but she said, yeah, as it stands right now, it'll, it'll die if they don't come back, so...
Well, I, I'll tell you, I'm, I'm going to be surprised if you don't have people standing there getting ready to check out on election day, wanting a receipt of some kind from that paper ballot they just filled out. What do you mean you want, what do you mean you want the ballot, okay? Where's my receipt?
And the other counties that I've spoken to that I say that went ahead and, and just stepped out there and bought that system, for the most part, their voters love the system, but they have issues with people, oh, that's my receipt, and they walk out and leave, and they have fleeing voters, and he said, and that's what somebody's sitting right there. You just, if you get busy and you just can't watch every single thing.
Yeah.
And it is my understanding currently that if you get back home and you realize, you know what, I forgot to put that in that scanner, they can't bring it back. So a lot of it's going to, you know, I'll, I'll spend some money in, in voter education and outreach and, you know, trying to make our voters aware. I think they'll adapt to it fine. They're used to the system we have, and really, the only thing different that voters will see is the extra paper and that process of inserting it, printing it out, and then putting it in a scanner.
Maybe we get an narcotics dog to work that exit from the polls and just...
This, this session...
Alert on the thing, they've got their ballot killing.
Yeah, and unfortunately, the majority of our election forms, they're all going to change, so there'll be an added cost in there to have to pick up the changing and printing of new forms and stuff, so...
Supposedly our travelers have, this, this session's been called for 30 days, they've got 20 days and ticking to come back, and the governor's threatening to call another 30-day special session to get this thing addressed. So it's going to be interesting watching the drama queen, I mean, the legislators.
Yeah, so they, they have to be back here, I think, by August 6th.
Yes.
And if they're not, then everything dies again and we resurrect it and start again. It's very frustrating, so...
All right. Thank you, Ms.
Thank y'all so much.
All right. Man, you want to come up?
How's it going?
How are you? Have a seat, please. All right. What's yours, sir?
This year's budget, we'll actually be going down $36,000. I talked to Eliza about the excavator, and we're going to try and work that out pretty soon, so go ahead and use it. We've got sprinklers, the LEC, about halfway done, but also need to use it at Expo Center for a project for Rochelle that she wants done. This year, we want to look at upgrading a few areas. Jury Assembly, the carpet was flooded during the, the water leak over there, like to put some new carpet in there and some lighting, LED lighting, like in here. Like to put carpet squares, so if there's any spills or anything, pull them up, put another one down. Been looking in Kyle Walk Plaza, the first floor's got wallpaper coming off the walls. Countertops are pretty rough shape in the registration area. You know, there's flooring tiles coming up, there's a lot of issues down, down in that area, it's pretty, pretty outdated. Also, on this corner of the building, it's settling real bad and sinking, and the porch is pulling away. A lot of cracks. For the juvenile, there's a classroom, we'd like to put a ceiling in, there's a leak and there's about a six-foot hole in the middle of the, in the room, and that leak has caused damage to the flooring also, so we'd like to put some flooring in there. Would like to install a sprinkler system over there for them. We've, when we've been over there, we've found plumbing, plumbing issues in the cells when we got the jail maintenance over there with their plumber to look at it, and they've dealt with problems like that at the jail. And they suggested we replace, replace those. They, they had the same issues and they couldn't get parts for what, what was in there, so they, they told us what we need to do as far as changing those cells over to a new, new system in there. After this, the last two courtrooms are done on the fifth floor. The only courtroom that won't be done is Judge Leggett's courtroom, the, the small one, and that'll be the last one in the whole courthouse that's not updated, so I'd like to get in there and we can do something with that one. It, it's got the old stuff in it. Merkel JP's requested, we've done the JP's lighting in his, in his office, and they, they would like to finish out the, the rest of the offices. The bathroom flooring is coming up, and they requested to get painted also. The historical commission project, tearing out the walls, we'll have, have to have new lighting, HVAC, flooring, and meeting, contract tomorrow to check, to test for asbestos to see if, what we're looking at over there. There's likelihood there's asbestos somewhere in that place as old as it is.
When you do that, does Buffalo Gap require... Wouldn't you do that, does Buffalo Gap require you to do this to code as far as doing your electrical upgrades and things like that?
Well, this is the welfare building, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's a historic.
Oh, okay. I, I was thinking Historic Village, but.
But they wanna tear out three, three walls and make one big classroom in there, in that room. But when you tear out the, the walls, then you're getting down into the flooring. And there's carpet that they put over, some, some vinyl flooring. So when you pull that carpet up, it's gonna pull up that vinyl, and it could be asbestos under that vinyl flooring. So. See, as far as the Historic Village, we, we didn't get down there so far to do the, the wagon barn, to replace the siding, courthouse, and then the sign on the main office. And there's always rotten wood down there to fix, you know. And on the Riddell House, we'd like to add gutters. We've got some fixed, some rotten wood down there on a corner, and we think gutters would fix that problem. And that's about it.
The, um, historical commission, are they gonna, I know they've got some money in their budget that they, in Strangerson, they haven't expended before. They're planning on spending most of that budget for that, is that not correct?
I think he'd said they had $20,000, but he said they, they didn't know if they could use all of it, or.
Yeah, I mean, we, we usually, we've always rolled how much we allocate them. In the past five years, we've been $120,000. So that has built up, it's gonna get rolled from year to year. I think we should actually move that money to a separate account for them, or spend it all down, and then when they have specific requests, actually come up and not just say, just if you use it as balance, because it's not possessed application that the budget's.
And if we do find asbestos over there and we have to get it abated, it'll eat up a large chunk of money real quick, so.
He also was talking about using, they thought that might use a dyes wee care team to do some of that ventilation work over there?
Yes, sir.
Is that still the plan?
I think so.
Okay, okay. All right. So any questions, everybody?
Man, I visited with our jail administrator yesterday, and she was giving me a list of electrical things that need to be done after the next fiscal year. And maybe we just need to think about hiring an electrician and letting him work on maintenance construction crew. There's probably four or five months projects that need to be done in the jail. Some of them are in the budget. Juvenile needs to have some maintenance items taken care of. But then again, how many times do we need to call a licensed electrician to take care of a 30-minute project when we could just take our in-house person, but we need to find somebody that's licensed, qualified, and that can be a part of the county team? What, what do you and Bobby think about that?
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, it would hurt. It should be faster if we might run some of that fishing to get the emergency situation.
Well, in the long run, I could see this possibly saving us money, instead of having to pay a service call fee or something like that, but having our in-house guy. Kyle and I've talked about this, and this might be something we need to explore before we get the final budget set, is locating a qualified person, bringing them in, and then just putting them on. Okay, this is where our priorities are, and just taking those one at a time. We've got some things we've gotta change out at the jail coming up here fairly soon, so.
Would this person be doing any work, like I said, at the Expo Center?
Well, we're the landlord, but that wouldn't be.
We're always calling electricians for out there for different things.
Yeah. But that wouldn't be one of the top 10 priorities. We've got these things that we've gotta get compliant with the Jail Standards Commission and, and other county buildings. But yeah, that, Randy, that could be utilization of that person, because we call Company X to do something on a breaker box, and paying service call fees and everything like that. We've got them in-house, we're saving money by not having to do that.
I could look at compiling how much we've paid, which is the past year.
If we could get our heads together, maybe we can save the county some money on that project.
Anything else, Mr. Graham? Graham? I'm sorry. Man, thank you very much. All right. Bobby, you wanna come forward? All right. I'm gonna talk about your budget.
Hello. Hello. Bobby, maintenance, 5030, start off with the 7401. I put in 270,000 for general building maintenance for the 2022 budget. And I put in $83,500 for jeans waterproofing to come and caulk the entire exterior plaza building. The caulking is basically gone. Some of the windows leaked. It's beyond repair. It needs to be redone. And also, I put in 86,000 for the elevator and the veterans' office. It's an old chair lift that goes up to the second floor, and they are gonna start utilizing that floor heavily. And that company went out of business years ago, and it's real slow, it's in bad shape, and it, it just needs to be replaced. Or, because if parts go bad, then it's just gonna be down until we get the money to fix it. So that's a total of 39, $439,000. And 7420 vehicle expense, I left that the same at 2,700. 7422 gas and oil, I left that the same at 3,800. Service contracts, 7435, I put in $70,241.18. Everything's gone up anywhere from 3% to 5%. And just about everybody went up, so I had to add to that. And custodial, I dropped that down to 40,000. Prices are coming down because of the COVID, and supplies are getting easier to come. So I'm not having to spend as much money on equipment and/or supplies.
Before you go on, I just, I just wanna comment. I am so grateful for the custodial service that we have and the outstanding job that they are doing. I mean, we, we never hear any complaints about stuff not getting cleaned. They clean stuff I've never seen anybody ever clean.
Well, thank you. Yeah, they're, they're really great.
They're doing a really good job. And I try to compliment them every time I see them out there, because I know that those are a lot of the people that don't, people don't say anything to them. They just yell ya. But having been here as long as I have and seen what we've had in the past and see what we have now, I, I compliment you and those folks on the work they're doing, doing our thing.
Oh, thank you.
We could do better, but it's outstanding the way it is.
It's a lot better than it used to be. So, okay, well, thank you very much. And elevator contract, 7460, that went up to 42,000. I put a little bit in extra in case a door or something breaks. It's not covered under the contract. We have a little bit of money to cover it. And supplies, filters for the airhammers just keep going up. I put 36,000 in for that. And that's for regular supplies throughout the year on top of the filters. And the security maintenance, the 7570, I put in 2,000 for that. That seems to cover a lot of the inspections and other things that come up as far as security issues. And phones, I put the 1,700 back in. That seemed to be sufficient for last year. And I put 1,100 in for conference seminars, the 7855, just in case somebody needs to go to class or something, learn something special. And uniforms, I put in 5,000. That'll cover all the cleaning crews, aid employees' uniforms for the year at 8055. And that's all of 5030. Anybody have any questions? Actually, Eliza does all that. Out of his office, plugs that in.
Back up. Fill it out, it's like, like, you just dropped it in. So it's not on your sheet, but it has been added, and it is included in the document.
Okay, and we'll go to the.
I'll get you a new sheet.
We'll go to the Expo Center, 5512, 7401. Adding 100,000 of that, because we did possess, take possession of all the buildings out there now. And there's a lot of new units and a lot of money that seems to be there in case something happens. We have a tremendous amount of stuff to take care of now. So I'm putting that in, and everybody seems to be using that as a general fund, so there'll be more money there for somebody else to use also if they need it. And service contracts went way up with all these other buildings and things getting adding. The 7435, I'm putting 106,200 in, and that will cover everything. That's two run starts a year, three filter changes a year, and discounts on labor and parts, so.
You think with so much new out at the Expo Center, we wouldn't have much maintenance costs, but we still do have some old buildings that.
Yes, yeah, there's plumbing issues all the time, and.
Basically, you've got two new buildings that you never had before, too.
That's right. Yeah. And the Coliseum completely changed, you know, as far as the way the airhammers are and everything. And there's just a lot more motors and stuff to take care of, belts, squirrel cages, bearings, everything. So continuation on replacing the units on the round building, the 9020 equipment, I put in 65,500 for that. The last two units, I'm replacing the middle one this year. It's one of the biggest units there. And then next year, it'll be another same-size unit that is on the right side. And then that will be completed at the end of next year, the 2023 budget.
Are any of these covering any of the costs relative to the roof on the office building up there? Do you think they worked on?
That's all under warranty. I've got a call in to him. He's trying to finish up a job right now. He's gonna.
Roofing company that it worked on before?
Yes. Yeah, it's under warranty. He's, he's coming. He knows about it. He's just gotta finish up the job before he can get here to look at it.
And all the repairs that are gonna have to be made in there, we didn't need our double, so all that's gonna come out of the construction budget.
What we're gonna try to pull much out of is FY21 that we have on the table, right?
Most definitely.
And once they make the repairs, I'm gonna go in and change all the ceiling tile out so we know what's old and what's new, because there's a lot of them that we just never had time to get out there and change. You know, things are busy, so. We do that, we get a good rain. I've noticed a lot of times, it only leaks whenever the wind blows really hard from the east or the west. And that pitch is so low on there, I would rather just take that metal roof off and put a composition roof on it. But you'd have to do a lot of framing, because whenever they built that building, they didn't frame it properly. You got so big a gaps in between, you'd have to do framing just to put the deck on it. But from the get-go, from the time that thing was built, we just got that thing stopped leaking whenever I first started here. And I would've changed it, but whenever we had that hailstorm, Richard wanted a new roof on it, and we've had problems with it ever since.
The other thing that we, the court, are gonna probably need to sort of be keeping in mind, and that is that eventually, none, none of this bond project addressed the parking areas. And there's a lot. On the east side, needs a lot of work. On the main, the front north side, we've been doing some piecemeal work out there relative to drainage, trying to get the water off the parking lot. We're, it's doing better. But the bottom line is is that that parking lot needs to be restripped. And I, I'd hate to restripe it in the condition it's in right now. So we're, I don't know what it costs to redo that, that. I don't know if that might be considered as part of the new, when they do the, the, oh gosh, can't think of the term. You know, the money they're splitting between now, between the expo and the.
It's called venue.
Venue money, yeah, the venue money. I don't know if when we get ready to redo that, if that could be a part of the project. I don't know. I'm just saying, the court needs to be, we need to be thinking about resurfacing that parking lot. We'll do, and do some of it piecemeal, but it's, it's a lot of area to resurface. And, and it would be better if we had somebody that could come in and just sort of like what we did with the courthouse parking lot, come in and redo the whole thing in one big project. But something, something to think about.
Commissioner, thank you. And I think there's, I think there's a lot of our buildings that need restripping down. Parking in this building needs to be restripped. The, but yeah, I completely concur with you on that. The other thing is, and I would just throw this out there, that ever since we've had the bond issue to improve the Expo Center, I have thought that, you know, it's nice that we have been able to help the Expo Center out. And I mean, we own the facility and everything else like that, responsible for its uptake. But the, it is a landlord-tenant relationship, and I think that we're, we're not charging very much rent right now for the use of that facility. And I think at some point, we need to start talking about that. And it's, you know, it's gonna be a painful discussion to have, and, you know, but we're gonna have to have it, because there's, you know, that, that facility is, is drawing some money in, it gets venue tax, everybody, our share of the venue tax goes to it and for the operation of that facility. And I think it just, as we go on through this process, I think the whole idea for, I think for taxpayers, was that that facility is going to bring some more money and some more events into the community. And as we go through, forward with this, that at some point, I think we're gonna need to charge more rent. That's really all I can say at this point, other than the fact that I just think at some point, we're gonna start thinking about that.
I just wanna mention the parking lot, so it was sort of on our radar.
And I've got one more with the Historic Village, the 7401. I'm putting 4,000 in it just for water heaters and ACs. They're not really needy out there, so I dropped that down 4,000 this year.
All right. Anything else? Bobby?
Thank you, Bobby.
Sir, thank you.
Thanks for not needing another new truck this year.
Maybe next year, I got an uniform on.
All right. Let me see here where we are. Okay. We're ready to hear from our constables now, Ben. Dwight, welcome.
Good evening, Mr.
Good.
Good afternoon, whatever afternoon.
We're gonna try to keep this short, sweet. We tried to keep everything down as much as we could. 7505 supplies, we had to go up this fountain, and that's just from envelopes, door hangers, and all of that, all of our paper goods went up. Postal, we went up $200. We're getting a lot of out-of-town paperwork, more than we've ever had, so we had to raise that just a little bit. Our papers are really beginning to pick up now. We're nearly back to where we was at. On line item 8001, we went up $2,000 on ammunition. Ammunition has gone sky high, if you followed it. Even, we, we can't even get it right now. But when we get it, it's gonna be considerably higher. So that's about it. All the rest of everything is, is the same. We're asking for a vehicle to replace a, either a 2009 or 2010. They've got more lights on it, we checked. It's gonna cost more to get it repaired than it's worth, so we're asking for one vehicle and all the non-capitalized equipment to, to put it in. We're asking for two bulletproof vests, that's on a grant. We're hoping we get that match grant, but we have to put it down. So we've been pretty lucky on that. I'm gonna bring, we bought, we've got 12 tasers. If you'll remember back, we got some money to buy a taser from an individual. We bought those tasers. Those tasers are outdated.
Those tasers are outdated now, we can't even buy batteries for them. A taser runs on a battery, so they've changed over from the new batteries, or the new taser. Our tasers cost twelve hundred dollars when we bought them, they're thirty six hundred dollars now. They come out with a deal also stating that tasers are only accurate forty percent of the time. First, you can't hit them, you don't get two sticks to close, and so that's not a very good deal for police officers. Plus, there's fourteen thousand lawsuits against taser right now. Because if I get a good hit on somebody, they're going down and probably going to hit something. So this is something that we've looked at for two or three years, but they've perfected it now.
Lonnie, what's the name of it?
It's a, Lonnie went and was certified against it. It's, it's a, there's a big fancy name on it, but it's a, a paintball gun. It's for law enforcement. Do you have the bullets? It shoots two kinds of bullets. The first bullet is just a hard plastic, the other bullet is a tear gas and CO gas. We've looked at them for the courtrooms, our tasers are accurate up to twenty-five feet. These are accurate up to sixty feet, so a lot better. If I have to shoot someone in a courtroom, we'll probably shoot the hard rubber ones first to try to get compliance. If they don't, then we can shoot them with the, with the CO two gas. It hits here and goes in their face, and we won't have to empty a courtroom here. So I think it's really becoming the thing for law enforcement. The, the biggest item, these are three hundred and something dollars apiece. I can buy six of these for what one taser costs. So we're going to have, we've had some money and we've bought several. We're asking for six more on the thirty eight, eight twenty six. These are a three-year warranty, and if you'll see the video, these, if we shoot somebody with a taser, usually we have to call ambulance out to take it out, these you don't have to. I just think this is going to be the, the future of law enforcement.
Absolutely.
With the way things are going now. Uh, we've done, since, when we bought the six, they, uh, we got to send one guy, Lonnie, to the school and got certified. So I think it's going to be, and they're, used to, they were real big. These are the same size as, as our tasers. They go in a holster, they lock in. We get them different colors so we don't get them mixed up, but I think it's going to be something that's really, and if you'd like a demonstration on one of them, Lonnie's loaded hot, so we can.
Demonstrate it on Chuck.
But I think it's a good, really a good thing for us, yeah. And it's, when it hits, you can see that it just hits here and the gas is right here, and so it doesn't contaminate the whole building. These inert bullets, the hard ones, they will take a guy down. And for the courtrooms, and we run into a lot of dogs when we're serving papers. You can hardly hit a dog with a taser. And so you can pop them with one of those, they're going to turn and run, so. We've really looked at them and really done a lot of studying on them. I think it's the way of the future. And, but when we first looked at them, they started going up, but tasers are just a thing of the past. They've just priced theirself out. Any questions on that? I think it's going to be a good thing for us. That's all we've done, we've tried to keep all of our budgets the same, but any questions on anything?
None for me. I think you got a good, I, I think that's a viable suggestion there, Dwight, I really do. I'm, I'm kind of curious because tasers haven't done what we thought they were going to do, and.
They're, and when they break down, we send them in, they cost, there's, there's nothing to break, it's CO two gas. Our taser cartridges, if we shoot a taser, it's thirty eight dollars, something like that. These are thirty-two cents in a CO two deal. They've really brought them a long ways. Brand new. Well, we've tried to contact some people. All the departments are going to, especially small ones, because we've, everybody's got the old tasers, who can afford thirty-six hundred dollars to replace them? So they're going to them big time. To give you an idea, I looked at the stock two months ago, and rhythm was a dollar twenty-four a, a share. It's twenty-four dollars a share today. And it's just getting started, I really think it's going to go sky-high. And I think in a, with the things that's happening in law enforcement, the non-lethal, that'll really be effective, will, it's going to go. Any questions on anything? We're really, our business is really picking up, yeah, we're getting a lot of controversy because we're doing about two evictions a day, and they don't want to move because they still think that COVID's involved, so we're really having a harder time right now.
You happy with your new building over there?
Sir?
You happy with your new building where you're at?
Yes, very much so. All, all of our offices are great, no complaints at all, y'all done a great job for us. Everybody got their own office. It's just difference in daylight and dark, we appreciate it.
How are you guys controlling access to your part of the building?
Sir?
How are you controlling the access in and out of your type, side of the building?
We've got key cards.
Okay, okay.
The front door opens from eight to five.
Okay.
And it comes into our office, you have to have a key card or we buzz you in. So security is tremendous in our state, so.
All right, any other questions for Constable King? Anything else?
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, you too. Lonnie, good to see you. Thank you all for your service. All right, JP Tuck has submitted his budget, and it will stand as presented. Anything you want to bring up there, Mr. Anderson? Specific to, okay? Okay. All right, we'll move down then to Constable Precinct Three, and Constable Bush, come on up.
Hello.
Hi, good to have you.
Good to see y'all, y'all.
You're welcome.
I know this is your favorite time of year. Mine too. My constable budget, sixty forty, is all the same except for I did ask for an increase in the salary for that constable office. If you'll remember, last year, or maybe it was the year before, I don't remember exactly, it was uh, brought, I brought to your attention the disparity in the constable's salary for the different precincts. Ever since I've been here twenty-five years, I've tried to keep my precinct in line with Precinct Two. As, Precinct Two, yes, as, you know, we're pretty comparable in size. As you know, in Precinct Three, our population has exploded over the past couple of years, and it still is. You think about it, so that's the reason for that request. And the only other increase was in ammunition, and Dwight told you about that. I just doubled mine and we'll be in good shape. Any questions on Constable Department sixty forty from you guys?
No, sir.
Okay. Next one is seventy five twenty one, which is the budget for environmental enforcement. If you'll look at that, it's all the same. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. No, it's still stored at your lot.
You still have it?
Thank you so much.
They fixed it though, right?
I don't know, but RJ said he would fix it, and I said you can use it if you need it. But it's, it is at Precinct One at view.
Anything else? Guys have the pins flying over here. Y'all had any question? I don't think there's any other question.
Okay, thank you very much.
If I could, just take a moment and just, I wanted to publicly acknowledge Constable Bush for his work he's done as our emergency management coordinator. He, he was a champion during COVID, I can tell you that we spoke almost daily. He did a great job of helping to educate the people we were working with in terms of, of where, how the county approaches things, certainly. And he was always, always very handy to, to let me know what's going on when I couldn't attend all the meetings and things, so.
Is that the emergency coordinator, is that, is that a paid deal, like from the county?
I get a stipend, I'm not sure how much it is. Do you know?
Can you say how much that stipend is, Mr. Anderson? I'm curious about that, if you, you have that computer right there in front of you.
It started out at five thousand dollars a year, but I don't know what it is now.
But you've been there for a couple of years already.
More than a couple.
Four, five, five, maybe?
More than that, probably close to ten.
Ten, wow, that's, I was just curious about that. And your constable pay, as I understood from this piece of paper, was twelve thousand one seventy-five, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. It's twelve thou, that's for the constable.
That's correct.
The emergency management is nine thousand dollars.
Nine thousand, okay, let's, I'll just grab some figures down here, so that's seventy-six. Okay, that's what I mean, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir, you too.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much, Dwight.
Have a great day.
Thank you, and you too. Okay, all right. Right, I've moved Precinct Number Four, Constable, and I think Constable Moore set his, will stand as presented.
Basically, Constable Moore, and he seems very pleased with what the job is entailing. Once again, he feels like that that constable precinct isn't large enough to warrant vehicles, so he's still using mileage to service AG papers and also service the bailiff for the Precinct Four Court.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Anything further on this, Mr. Cuff?
Uh, there doesn't appear to be any concern with mileage issue.
All right. Okay, we are about two minutes away from our, kind of, we're going to go into recess for twenty-four hours till tomorrow. So anybody have anything they want to bring up as far as a discussion at this point, or you want to just think about the numbers for a while?
I think we need to plow through tomorrow before we start discussing, we still, we still got a few things to hear from you.
Absolutely. I think we've had some good discussions today. Certainly gotten a lot of stuff out on the table and talked about it, so it's. All right, there's nothing further, then we'll go ahead, is there a motion to stand at recess?
So move.
We do have a motion and a second. On your favor, please indicate, I say no. No, I oppose, say no, and we stand at recess.
But Jeff, on the draft agenda, you might want to add that you look to JP officer, we can handle that. Take the replacement for the Chief Justice.